That would be him.
The mayor.
The town council, that would be me. We had to do it first.
Okay. Hey, Sandra. Hey, Sandra. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town hall. Today is Tuesday, July 15th. And this is the town council meeting. Invocation will be by Alderman Boudreaux, followed with the pledge by Alderman Patterson. If you'd please silence your phones and stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we would first like to offer prayers for all the souls affected in Texas during the terrible flash floods. And now we understand New Mexico and New York have had flash floods, so we pray for them as well. We know it is your will to bring them to yourself in heaven, but on earth we still grieve for them. Also, we pray to bestow your protection on a town of Abida Springs, so that we may be spared from the destruction from any natural disaster during this hurricane season. May we, the Board of Aldermen and this administration, have the wisdom to make correct decisions that will provide Abida Springs with continuous improvement concerning the matters brought before us. We pray in the name of Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, mayor's announcements. July 4th, if you were able to go, it was really a successful event. The band was great, fireworks were great. It was hot early, but then became bearable. We do have a new hire to replace Linda Cheek. It's Ms. Jennifer Rawser, who's not here tonight, but she will, I hope all y'all get around to meeting her. She's going to be working in the finance end of all this, all the stuff in the town hall. We also, there's a storm. We have a low pressure that's moving across the Gulf. I don't know the latest status of it, but I mean, it's supposed to be tomorrow, the next day, it's supposed to be pretty a lot of rain. It's not supposed to be, last I heard, it was not going to be a wind event. It's just going to be a rain event type thing, but could be a lot of rain. So, we need to be ready for that as well. And that's about it on mayor's announcements. Leanne, let's do a roll call. Oh wait, hold on. Oh yeah, that's right. Thank you. I forgot about that. These are, we, here, there they go. We, congratulations to some of the local businesses. Abida Full Serve, they had this, I guess, like a little competition, and they auto service center category, they got gold. Oil change, they got gold. And tire shop category, they got gold. The hotel, the Abida Springs Hotel, received a bronze, a bronze coin, I guess it is. And then the best catfish category, the Abida Cafe got a silver. So, we're killing it in Abida. What's up? Yeah, wait, I missed the first page. Yeah, here we go. Yeah. Abida Farmer's Market got gold as well. Go Angie and Taylor. Yeah. And the Trailhead Museum got a bronze for their work, so that's good too. What else? Yes. Then we had, I don't know if y'all saw, in the Farmer, I don't know how many of y'all get the Farmer still, but we had the Bird, Bees and Trees. Yeah, oh, it's up there, there you go. Nice story about all that. Martha Grunning got to be interviewed. And then, then there were kids and stuff like that on the 4th of July as well, in another one. So, a lot of fun, a lot of things going on, and Abida's, Abida's killing it, knocking it out. Yeah. Cedric is in there, sitting on the mural. Yeah. Wait, is it the mural? Mural? Mural. Mural. Not Muriel, mural.
Who hosted the contest, by the way? Who hosted that contest, where they had gold, bronze, silver awards given out?
North Shore. Times Pick.
Okay, so it wasn't a local thing, it was really the North Shore, and those were voted best businesses in Trailhead Museum. So, that was pretty nice accolades.
Yes, pretty nice. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, so everybody did, you know, John and his crew over at the hotel, and Wendell, and, you know, Brent, I mean, everybody did a great job. The market was everything fantastic, so. Okay, moving forward, Leanne, roll call?
Here.
Here.
Okay, call for any agenda modifications? Hearing none, will move forward. Accepted June 17th, 2025 town council meeting minutes. Have a first?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. May 2025 financial reports, budget amendment, this is Ms. Cunningham.
Good evening. So, as you can see, we're, the financials that you have in front of you are as of May of 2025. So, we're 42% of the year is gone. So, theoretically, 42% of your budget will be used. I will, you know, it looks like you guys have a really busy agenda, so I am going to go over this kind of at a high level. With the June financial statements that you will get next month, you'll have six months of the year will be done. There will be some more budget amendments that will be provided to you guys to look at. So, for this time, I think we'll just kind of go with some of the highlights of the budget, of the financial statements, excuse me. So, starting-
Excuse me, Michelle, before I forget, we actually, last time, if you wouldn't mind, incorporating into the June, put a little asterisk by those things that have been paid out for 100%.
Yes, and I apologize, they were done. I think unfortunately what got printed wasn't the version that had those marked. So, I'll make sure that that gets done for the June. Starting with the general fund, if you notice online, 30, your total operating revenues are $700,000. You're about 49% of your budget. Some of your budget line items, as we kind of have discussed in the past, are lagging a little bit. Those really are going to be in your permit fees and anything related to that. That's just kind of going to be depending on how much the buildings are going to be, and building and construction during the year. We also talked about citation and fines and fees, that's also lagging, but that will have a budget amendment for that. You also have, as I think we've noticed in the past, your autism, the event, that's all done. Your revenues did equal your expenses on that. And then also your push mower parade, that is also done. That, you did have more revenues than you did have of expenditures. On the next section on line 35, these are your dedicated revenues. There is a couple of things I want to point out to you regarding that. On your trace lighting, which you'll notice on line 34, you've gotten 74%. This is a reimbursable grant monies, so you're going to, what's going to be reflected on these financial statements are expenditures that are greater than these revenues, because your revenues are all going to lag a little bit. And I'll point out to you when we get to those expenditures, how much those are. So, your total revenues overall on line 36 is 56% of the budget, or $1.2 million. On your expenditure side, your public safety salary and benefits on line 41 is about 40%. So, you're pretty much in line with the percentage of your budget. On the next page, line 52, we've talked about this in the past. This is software that you guys have not had to pay for in the past, that you are now having to pay for, and a budget amendment will occur to fix that. On the next page, your clerk of court expenditures on your salaries and benefits, you're within line here, on line 59, that's at 37%. And similar on your total general government salaries and benefits on line 70, you're at overall 40%. On line 81, your governmental expenditures, you're at 25% or $36,000. So, nothing really, you know, out of line there. Going into your next section, some of these we have talked about in the past, on line 84, that's your Tyler Tech. That's why that's a little bit out of line. So, that will be, a budget amendment will occur for that.
Can I stop you there for a second? Those prescription, subscription things, did you tell me those are annual?
Tyler Tech is annual, but there are other smaller subscription expenditures that hit it throughout the year.
That's why it goes up?
Tyler Tech has a monthly?
No, Tyler Tech is annual.
So, 84 is more than Tyler Tech or just Tyler Tech?
Oh no, that's Tyler Tech and additional smaller subscriptions, but most of it is Tyler Tech. On line 94, that's at autism event. So, your total expenses, what, line 1,247, your revenue was 1,250. On line 96, was that push mower? Your expenses were 1,000, your income was 4,100. So, you did okay with that one. So, then if you turn the page on line 112, your total governmental other expenses are $119,000 or 36% of your budget. On the next page, here's all you, as I was mentioning to you earlier, on those grants and those projects. So, if you look at your trace lighting, which is on line 120, 118, 119 and 120, specifically on 118, your trace lighting, it was $500,000. So, that was significantly more money than you have collected for the grant to fund that. You have about $143,000 remaining that you can draw to cover those expenses. So, then overall, your total general fund expenditures on line 130 are $1.2 million or 56%. And the budget is a little bit higher, the expenditures are a little bit higher, and it's a result of you guys having to pay for those expenses and then get reimbursed by those grant monies. So, any questions on the general fund?
For the trace lighting, this is, and Janet, you may want to be able to answer this. In May, the ending balance in May for the general fund, operating 5910, was $718,000. And as of today, it's $84,000, was that trace lighting? So, there was a $400 and something thousand transferred in via internet in May?
And the check was like 6 something, because there's a match, so the 489 was their portion.
But I didn't see it in the statement go out in May, I saw it come in in May.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
So, it's internet transfer from 5252 for $489,639 on May the 23rd? But I didn't see it go out in May.
Well, we wrote a check, and they just cashed it.
Okay. Got you, thank you.
Okay, on the utility fund. So, your gas revenues on line 7 are at 62% of your budget, or $400,000. Your water revenues, your total water revenues on line 16 are 179, almost 180,035%. You know, so you're just starting to realize some of those increases in those water rates. Because May was the first time that you collected any of those increased, increase in the rates. So, it is going to slowly come up. On your sewer revenues, similar to water, on line 24, you had $266,000 or 33%, almost 34% of your budget. Your garbage revenues on line 30 are pretty much on target at 41 or 42% or $177,000. Your other revenues on line 35 are just under $70,000 or 40% of the budget. So, overall, your total operating revenues are just over $1 million in water or utility, I mean, sorry, in your utility fund, and that's 43% of your budget. So, on your expenditure side, on line 59, your utility general operating expenses, you're at $110,000, oh, excuse me, $110,000 or 45%. One thing that's kind of driving that a little bit higher than that 42% is on line 52, the software subscriptions. And that's the biggest expenditure in that, is that Tyler Technology subscription. On your gas operations, your gas salary and benefits are pretty much on target at 40% or $57,000. Your operating expenses, those are a little bit higher, and that's at 67% or just under $300,000. And some of that has to do with some of your natural gas purchases being a little bit higher than budget, and your repair and maintenance being a little bit higher than budget. And then also, that gas reporting and training, that was, I think we had talked about that last month, that that was with some reporting that is now occurring that will probably need a budget amendment. It's coming in higher than expected.
It's definitely going to need a budget amendment, because we're looking at that for the year, probably coming in somewhere around $19,000. There's several different reports that have been added that are required, but they're not required every year. So, Kristen's creating a schedule to show us in the years going forward, which years those higher amounts will be needed.
So, then your garbage on line 73, those expenses are just about right at target at 40% or 41% or $162,000. On your water, your water salaries and benefits are at 37% of budget or $87,000. And on your water expenses, you're just around 8% or $14,000. So, overall, for water, you're at 22% of your budget or around $102,000. For sewer, your sewer salaries are at 37% or $87,000, so you're pretty much on target there. Your operating expenses on line 96 are around 30% or $112,000. So, overall, your total sewer operating expenses are at 33% of budget or just over $200,000. Your non-operating expenses on line 107 is $146,000, and that's at 45% of your budget. So, total overall expenditures on line 108 is just over a million or at 41%, 42% of budget. So, any questions on utility? On your public works, on line 9, are your total revenues of $466,000 or 42% of budget? On your expenditure side, your expenses for streets is at 2% or $2,000. For repairs and maintenance on line 23, you're at 15% or $52,000. On line 28, your salaries and budgets are right on target at 41% or $81,000, $82,000. And then on line 44, this is also out of, is higher than budget due to the Tyler Technology subscription. But overall, on line 46, is your total actual expenses of $148,000 or 43%, 44% of budget?
Michelle, what is the percentage of overtures of this Tyler Tech with these subscription expenses?
Overall, for the entire-
What was the initial contract for?
The yearly subscription amount is $45,000. The difference in the budget amounts by fund is in the difference in the way that it was budgeted originally. It was going to be split up between all the different funds, and when we reworked all the funds at the beginning of the year, we changed it to where utility fund is bearing 40% of the subscription price, because it has the billing, it's what we're using Tyler Tech for right now. And then general fund and public works each get 30%.
So, the original price for Tyler Tech for 2025 was how much?
$45,000.
So, how can we be that far over budget?
The $45,000 hasn't changed. It's still $45,000, it's just allocated differently between the funds.
Well, we're at $25,000 just in utilities already year-to-date, and we budgeted $15,000.
So, it sounds like when your budget was originally created, that $45,000 was going to be spread across all the funds.
I understand that.
Well, when the, when the actual expenditure occurred, it was determined that to report the expenditure only on the funds that really use Tyler Technology the most.
Which is the general fund, the utility fund and public works.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
And that's exceeding $45,000 after five months combined.
There's other subscriptions in addition to-
I'm asking, what percentage of that is Tyler Tech?
$45,000 is Tyler Tech. It's a one-time yearly, it's $45,000, is what Tyler Tech is.
I think what he's asking is, what is the percentage of Tyler Tech to the total expenditures of subscription? Is it like 90% of it, is it 80? I don't know that. We'll have to, we'll research that and get back to you.
That's the question I'm asking, Michelle.
And we'll have the breakdown for the budget amendment to show you.
Within five, five months of expenses exceed $45,000. So, we've exceeded $45,000 Tyler Tech budget for the year already.
It's already paid, there's no more expenses from Tyler Tech.
I realize that, but we continue to pay monthly expenses to Tyler Tech as well and other subscriptions? We don't? Okay.
There's no Tyler Tech expenses monthly, they were all paid at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
So, any expenses that you see added to that would be smaller subscriptions.
Like Office, Microsoft Office, you know, you may have subscriptions for that, so that's what you'll see in there.
Thank you.
But we'll get you the breakdown of what is in all the subscriptions. On the recreation fund, so on line 10 is your total operating revenue, you're at 52% or $94,000. And then also on line 12, that is the grant income, you're at 75% or $112,000. That's for the reimbursement for the museum deck.
And we have collected the full amount now to date. That project is completed and it's in the closeout phase.
On line 19 is your park and rec salaries and benefits of $11,000 or 39%. Your other expenditures for park and rec on line 24 at $15,000 or 47%. If you notice, the, on line 22, the repairs and maintenance, there was a parked bathroom repair that ended up happening, and so that's why that pushed it up higher than that 42%. Your total museum expenses on line 30 are $10,000 or 25% of budget. Your farmer's market salaries and benefits on line 35 were at $15,000 or 43% of budget. And the total farmer's market expenditure is on line 39 are at 42% of budget. Your other expenditure is on line 48 or $18,000 or 55%. And what's kind of throwing that a little bit higher is also the assessor fee that was paid in the beginning of the year. And then the other event expenses, that's for the Gumbo Cook-Off.
And Busker Fest.
And Busker Fest. And if you turn to the next page, on line 50, that is your museum deck, that's at 81%. And as Jeanette said, it's all closed out through June. On your cemetery, this one, your total revenues on line 3 are $9,700 or 31%. And then your salaries and benefits on line 8 are at 40%. So, your total expenditures on line 11 are $7,000, but your revenues are meeting your expenditure for this fund. And then the lairs fund is your debt service fund, this is where you're paying off those bonds. Your total revenues you receive is from Abilorum, so most of that you've already received. That's on line 3 at 97%. Line 4, your principal payment that's paid once a year, that's at 100% paid off. And your interest is paid twice a year, so you still have one more interest payment, and then you'll be finished. All the expenditures will be at 100%. Any questions on debt service or any of the financials?
I do have one question. I know we're, over the last couple of months, talking about a budget amendment that will be coming. Do we have a running total of what the expected amount would be for that budget amendment?
No, it's still a work in progress.
Okay.
For June's numbers, can we have the 2024 budget column added, as well as the 2025 budget, just so we can see where we are over prior year?
That will be in the budget amendment worksheet that you get, that will show 2024's actual, 2025's budget, and then-
2025's actual year-to-date.
And then 2025, the year-to-date, and then proposed budget amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for all the hard work.
Thank you, ma'am. On page three, though, Ms. Cunningham, on page three, where it said, the parade, the, just to let you know, that's called the Push Moe Parade, not mower. That's right.
Well, it is a push mower.
It does say that on that note, but I was trying to, yeah. Okay, going into new business, number one, call for executive session. We have our attorney staff here, Mr. Andrew Capitelli. You want to?
Hear me. We reached out to the mayor and requested that executive session be placed on your agenda for the purpose of a demand, I said you say demands, and litigation update. Recently, there have been three developments concerning the Abida Meadows Lonesome Development. First, a July 1st demand letter sent by council to us and to the mayor. Second, a demanding, an email demand sent by the developer to the town directly regarding requirements for the development. And third, a lawsuit filed by the developer against the town engineer, John Catalonato. We requested that-
Excuse me, Ms. Capitelli, would you repeat those dates, July 1st, you said, was what? July 1st, you said, was what?
July 1st, 2025 is the date of the demand letter that was sent to us by email and was also FedExed to the mayor. I don't know the receipt date on that.
That's from the developers?
Yes, from the developers' council.
And that was the first communication we've had with them for how long, since how long?
You know, there's?
I can't say that that's the only communication, because planning and zoning is communicating with them to move them forward for the planning and zoning agenda.
Right.
Get their final plat approval. But as far as the mayor's communication.
Who initiated the communication with Lonesome Development?
The July 1st communication came unsolicited, following the Louisiana Supreme Court's reversal of the district court's decision in their favor.
Okay, you're talking about, okay, I'm familiar with the?
Right, this was the?
The legality of delivery of service for the contempt. But there was no communication prior to July 1st by the town of Abida Springs to Lonesome Development?
That's not accurate.
No, no, there are email communications. Those were the email demand that I had referenced, from the developer to planning and zoning or to town employees regarding requirements they felt should not be imposed on them for the development.
There was an email sent by the mayor, I'm not sure what the date of that was, after the Supreme Court decision where the contempt of court was set aside, reaching out and requesting or letting them know that he is hoping to move forward and to find a path forward.
Okay.
I'm paraphrasing here, I don't have the email in front of me. But there was an, an email at that time where the mayor reached out to let them know that his hope is that we could move forward in a collaborative way.
Okay, great. Thank you, mayor, for reaching out.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Catalano.
So, so following these developments, we felt that an update needed to be provided to the town. Unfortunately, those are going to contain some attorney-client confidential communications that cannot be given in an open forum such as this. So the request for executive session, which we initiated, was to update the alderman as to the, and the mayor's to the current status. It's informational in nature on the current status, though privileged. And as with all executive sessions, no vote is being called for in connection therewith. It's simply informational.
So can I ask, if we go into executive session and you just inform us of what has been filed, et cetera, I know we can't speak about that, but are we free to come back and speak about openly with the public about what the possible solutions are?
Yes, we would recommend that the communications that we give, the advice, the opinions that we give in there remain confidential. However, we're not planning to speak about how or in what manner or about these resolutions that are coming up after it. That's not the purpose of it. And I think those are geared towards moving forward. So you certainly would be able to discuss your thoughts on how to move forward without waiver of that privilege.
Okay, so to be clear, the executive session is more or less a one-way communication that you inform us of what has been filed against the town?
It certainly can end up that way, but any questions that you may, may have, we would answer as well. So it could be a dialogue, or it could be just us informing you of the developments and the potential legal ramifications from those developments.
Thanks.
With that being said, I make a motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt a minute for a point of information. I am here on behalf of Lonesome Development, and I have a statement to make. I'll confess that before we go into executive session, I'll have that regular part of the hearing session.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any opinion one way or the other?
I would be against an executive session. I don't like them. I want everybody to hear every word that's said about everything, because this is such a controversial issue, I think everything needs to be open. The legal stuff, it always stays closed anyway. We can't talk about it anyway. But everything else, we can, so why have the executive session? I'm just against it.
Well, the reason we have an executive session is to be on top of all of the information that's available to us to be able to move forward and make, make decisions as far as trying to take care of the litigation that we're going to be faced with. So it's only informational. I don't, I don't see any reason not to go into executive session.
The reason is that?
She has the floor.
I apologize.
Oh, she has the floor?
No, you have the floor.
No, no, you do.
The reason is, is that I just think that everybody needs to know every word that has to be said about this. That's it.
Procedurally, can I ask that the mayor decide whether or not those person for Lonesome may speak before this is even taken a vote?
Do we have a comment on going into executive session?
We have an opportunity, a public comment before we go on.
Okay. There you go. Sir?
Well, I want to make a comment too, after.
You want to do it after?
I can do it after, Mr. Martin.
If we want to have a public comment at a certain time, if you will, however you guys want to do it.
Yeah, we finish first, and then?
Okay.
If you have a public comment, possibly a question.
Okay.
All right, I am not in favor of going behind closed doors for further discussion for any of these legal matters. I am willing to speak publicly, meet publicly with all parties present. That would be the town administration, the developers, mediators, attorneys, public body, to determine a path forward in meeting the terms of the agreement. This is the developmental agreement. This is executed on January the 18th, 2018. And to my knowledge, nothing in this developmental agreement is being changed. Is there, Mr. Capitelli, is anything change, being changed in this developmental agreement?
Change in it? I'm not sure what I mean. The development agreement is the development agreement, as it is today. There's been no amendment to the development agreement. I would just note in brief response that litigation strategy is to remain confidential with the town. I would similarly note that Lonesome has counsel. I would note that Lonesome is not subject to open meeting laws, nor would it disclose confidential communications and strategy with its counsel to you. We represent a number of, of political subdivisions of the state. Executive session for litigation strategy is common and expected, and in fact mandated, I would suggest. It's certainly your right, right not to vote to go into it. I would note that we're not advising the board or the mayor on where it should go forward. That is in, in your hands and your determination. But the litigation strategy portion of any litigation should remain confidential.
Yeah, so if we, if we don't go into executive session, they're not going to say it in front of everybody. So that makes your objection kind of moot at that point.
This board has the authority to create ordinances for the town and to approve a budget for the town.
Well, what does that have to do with legal strategy?
This legal strategy, I, I, I mean, if you have an interest in it, it's fine. I think this should be between the attorneys and the administration. That's my personal preference.
So you would rather not know what their strategy is and to advise us in, in pass going forward?
I don't need to know their strategy. Nothing in this developmental agreement is changing. That would have to come before this board for approval.
And it also gives us an opportunity to, to discuss this amongst ourselves. Are you saying that you're against this?
I said that from the very beginning. I am against it.
You're against it? I call the question.
We can't call the question. We haven't even had conversation.
Well, we? Well, it's a mute point now.
Mr. Martin, do you want to come up? Is it Mr. Martin?
You want to speak?
I'm going to let them speak. I'm going to speak.
Yeah. Right there, the mic.
Mr. Martin, if you would, just push the button to the, yeah. Push the button? There you go.
Got it. Thank you. Good afternoon, good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Martin Landre. I'm an attorney with Gordon Ratain Montgomery Barnett Law Firm. We represent Lonesome Development LLC. I'm here on behalf of my partners, Howard Sinore and Philip Antis, who handle the representation for the firm. Both were unavailable on such short notice, and have asked me to make a statement for the record today. Lonesome Development was not given notice that this council would address or otherwise discuss the Lonesome Development project at this meeting. The agenda appears to have been issued late yesterday afternoon. One would think, if the goal is a successful completed project, that Lonesome Development would be invited to participate in the discussion, and that has not happened, certainly not with regard to this meeting. There is currently a final and non-appellable judgment in place against the town of Abida Springs regarding this project. Lonesome Development has still not gotten a clear answer from you as to the town's intentions of providing sewer and gas to the project as required by the development agreement. The town's obligations are crystal clear in the development agreement and the judgment. Lonesome Development has no interest in changing the development agreement or negotiating any changes to the final judgment. The final and unappellable judgment requires strict compliance with the wording of the development agreement. In other words, Lonesome Development will pipe the sewage to the St. James manhole, and what the town does with it, with it from there is no concern to Lonesome Development. The talk of alternatives is not contemplated or required by the development agreement or the judgment. Further, the development agreement requires the town to provide water and gas, and the failure to do so is contempt of the final judgment. And failure of the town to do these things will unfortunately result in a contempt finding and the jailing of the mayor. And so with that, I thank you for the opportunity to make the statement.
May I ask you a question, sir?
Unfortunately, I am not in a position to answer any questions.
I figured. I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, I would just note that had there been prior notice, we would have had someone from Lonesome Development here to answer questions. I am not that person, so I apologize for that.
It's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'm Brian Sharp. I'm a recent returned resident to this town. I'm going to say, the same way that gentleman just did, that I would recommend y'all listen to what he's got to say so that you have the information up to date rather than ignorance. I don't mean that as an insult. Ignorance is a lack of knowledge. He's holding knowledge that y'all need to disseminate to us. You're their client. They cannot say it in public. So if you don't hear it for pride, there's a problem. And if there's no consensus here on a regular basis, I'd start looking at that. What really matters is Abida Springs. Not what we can't do, not what y'all think individually y'all must do. It's going to have to be done from all of us. Y'all represent all of us. So put your pride at the door. Figure out a way to work together, not on emotion, but on what's, everything that's there. If you leave something off the table, it doesn't give you a relief from vicarious liability. So I would, I would recommend that you need to know as much as out there, because you're only as good as what you know. And then you're only as good as what you do. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any bells?
Two points. One is, it's obvious that the, the developers don't want to negotiate whatsoever, so there's no point in inviting them. I mean, I don't see why they would care. But as far as you're going into executive session, I would recommend that you do go into executive session, because it's important for all of you to know what the potential, what the real and potential legal strategies are. I don't think this is by any means the end of the road legally. There's still things you can do, and I'm sure the lawyers are going to tell you exactly what they are or give you some ideas. So I urge you to go and hear an executive session, and then tell us what you can afterwards, please.
Thank you, Stewart.
Love the boot. Don't pollute.
Sandra Slyfer, I just want to echo what Mr. Sharp said and what Stewart just said. As a veteran of someone who has attended governmental meetings for more than 25 years, that public bodies always go into executive session to discuss legal strategy. I have never been to a public meeting where legal strategy was discussed publicly, that this is something that is routine, and I urge you to please vote to go into executive session. This is not something that is unique. This is the standard way of doing business in government, so please go into executive
Lee Barrios of Abida Oaks, in agreement with Ms. Slyfer, Slyfer and a couple other people, I'm a stickler for open meetings law. I deal with it too, like Sandra has for years. There are rare occasions when it would be appropriate for a public body to go into executive session. This is one of those, absolutely. When you get, when you discuss legal strategy, it's very important. I do have one question. Did you say in the letter that, that Lonesome Meadows had instituted another lawsuit, or was it threat for another lawsuit?
Lonesome has filed another lawsuit. Apologies. Lonesome has filed another lawsuit against John Catalonato, the town engineer.
Okay. And I don't know what that, but you all should probably know how that is relevant to your situation. But anybody who's read the rest of the agenda, it absolutely appears this town has absolute intent not to, to change the agreement, so to speak, but to figure out a solution that suits both sides. Okay? So, and that, that now could be discussed in open session. But as far as the legal, I highly recommend it. Does it have to be a unanimous vote to go into executive session?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. Two-thirds, okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. No, no, so I'm waiting. I didn't know, I was just waiting. Sorry, for clarity, when the gentleman was speaking about, they're going to build up to a certain point up at a manhole, and then, what, St. James? From St. James forward, it's, it's our responsibility? What's the discrepancy of that meeting point, sir? If, anybody? Or anybody?
I might clear the question.
Where they build up to a point that meets to an?
They connect to St. James, correct?
Wait, where they, where they build up to a point where their new construction meets an infrastructure that already exists, that goes to the sewer system, there's a junction point?
They bring theirs to St. James.
From where theirs stops, from that point to the septic or sewage treatment system, what's the discrepancy?
Yeah.
Like, what's the conflict from St. James to, like, what, what? They're trying to hold the town? So, so I'm, I'm asking the question out of ignorance right now, because I'm not fully aware of all this stuff, because I've been dealing with my own stuff for a while.
Well, your, your viewpoint is directly on point.
Yeah, where they meet at Abida, that should be a done deal, and it should be over. So what's the discrepancy after that that's causing litigation and then re-litigation?
And? The, the, the point you're making is, is perfect. You're hitting what the impasse is. And that is, that in this situation, the development agreement has never been amended, and in it, it has a connection that's required. If that connection is used, the sewage system for the town will fail, and sewage will back up into all your homes. But the developer doesn't care about that.
Okay, so, and, I'm, I'm trying to not, I'm trying to just keep it simple and not incite any type of emotion prior to, because I'm not aware. But when it comes down to it, I can tell you from, I'm not a professional licensed construction guy, but I've been doing construction my whole life. If it's a plumbing issue for a drainage system, I have worked on sewage systems in the past when I was in school with LSU, working summer jobs, with a guy who refurbished sewer systems. So I have a little bit of an understanding of it. We have an outdated system that will not accommodate the new system that's going to be pumping in septic at a bigger volume, more people than the other systems used to handling, or?
It can't handle the, the capacity that's coming on, that's correct. And the town's?
It'll increase the existing capacity to a point where it won't be able to handle it, and the physical infrastructure should fail from what's coming into it.
There are capacity issues now. This will greatly exacerbate those capacity issues. The town engineer that has been sued?
Okay.
The town engineer that has been sued has given an opinion relative to that.
Okay. I don't have the authority to ask any other questions beyond that, but...
No, no, and I would just note as well that...
That satisfies me.
That there's been no other engineering opinion given is notable as well by Lonesome or anyone else, to the contrary.
The lady who was up here talking about not understanding the engineering thing, if I can ask another, I'm not trying to hog the mic. You were the nice lady. The thing about it is, if the engineer didn't prepare for future development and compensate for that ahead of time, maybe, I'm not a lawyer, but that shouldn't have anything to do with the town. And I would say, as a citizen, I would like to see, not you, sir, but the people you're representing today, you're talking about a whole town full of people in a community that's a, it's a foothold to the rest of the little communities around here to make a bigger community. In good faith, it don't matter why somebody's doing or not doing something. It matters that the stuff gets done. So somebody needs to do something and start figuring something out, because there is no can't unless somebody artificially puts it there. There's always a way. So it's a little bit past time, whomever needs to hear it. I'm not trying to chastise anybody. I know that's what it sounds like. I'm looking at it from an outside point of view. Y'all been in this boiling pot for a while, but I'm from here, and I know what it was like before in the politics of it. I know what it's like now. I've been out of it. This is junior high stuff. I don't know about y'all. I'm 52 years old. I'm not doing junior high stuff, so...
Dan?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make a point that the motion was to go into executive session, and therefore public comment should only address whether or not you should go into public...
Executive session.
Into executive session, not a rehash. That wasn't on the agenda, so you're really veering off the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Dehammecourt. The way to settle this is to honor the contract that has been adjudicated in a court of law. That adjudication went to the appeals court, and it affirmed the trial decision. That was then challenged in the Supreme Court, and on November of 2022, the Supreme Court affirmed the appeals court decision.
Wait a minute. It doesn't have anything. Do you have something to say about going...
You didn't interrupt anybody else speaking.
You did not.
You're not even speaking to the point.
Mr. Dehammecourt. You haven't let me finish my point.
Mr. Dehammecourt, I'm speaking, and I'm asking you to talk about going into executive session or sit, okay?
I'm going there.
Well, make it quick. Quickly. Let's go.
That's the solution, is to honor the contract. And the concept of sewage being in the street, that would be the town's decision to not fulfill their obligations.
Okay, thank you.
Now, as it comes to the special session...
Thank you, sir.
No, I'm not finished.
No, you're finished.
You have mentioned that there was at least four...
Enough.
Enough.
Enough. Sit down. Sit down. Sit down, or we're gonna remove you.
Well, William McGee. Hi. It's my first time speaking at Wendy's, so I'm a little nervous. My name is Beth. I am not for going into executive session. I'm not sure really that that is your role, to be negotiating the legal strategies. I do have a quick question about the, if you do go into it. There was posted online some documents about shared responsibility and an amendment. Is that something that is going to be discussed in executive session, or that was something else?
That's something different.
That has to be discussed public.
Okay, great. I wanted to make sure that that was a public thing, so, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gail Leday. As a constituent of this Board of Aldermen, I am asking that you go into executive session. I see no reason not to. Knowledge is power. Why would you not want to know all the information you can? Thank you.
Jean Wieg and Abida, I want you to go into executive session, because I don't want any more sewer in my yard. And however you can solve this, the quicker the better, because I'm the one that's getting the sewer in my yard. So please go into executive session and try to figure it out. Thank you.
Hi. Byron Orman, 1117th Street. I've listened to a lot of what's going on here, and I do agree, in my mind, that it does make sense for the Aldermen to go into executive session, because I fear that if it's in a general public environment, that maybe there's a thing that the attorney cannot say. So instead of you getting the full, true disposition of things, he may hold that back because of the concern of something getting out. So I kind of do see the point of going into executive session. That way, there's, nobody's gonna hold any punches as far as what the truth is. To me, that's the only way to move anything forward. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orman.
Anybody else?
I have a little something, if I can do it. I don't know at this point.
Sure.
I don't know. It's not about executive session, but today I got a phone call from Baton Rouge and found out that our finance chairman has been in touch with people up there seeking funding to upgrade the sewer system here. And evidently, they're willing to go with the 2.1 million that the engineer says, but it would probably take a year to get it. So I don't know if I was supposed to tell it. Alderman Saucy was in touch with Baton Rouge, but I'll let him say it.
I am working every avenue I can. We do not have a commitment for 2.1 million. I thought that was the minimum that we'd need. Alderman Patterson and I had a conversation earlier today, and that was the figure that he shared with me. And I'm gonna do everything I can in my power to secure as many, as much resources possible to get this thing moving.
Can I make a comment?
It does not change the fact that we need to know everything that the attorneys would like to tell us in regards to this age. Knowledge is power. And if you don't believe that, you're just naive. So what we need to do is sit down with these gentlemen and figure out what they have to say to us that, I'm not a lawyer. Dan's not a lawyer. None of us up sitting up here are lawyers. None of us. That's why we have lawyers. They are the ones that are supposed to advise us in a path of right and wrong and how we're gonna get there, and their knowledge and everything that they have, they can explain it to us succinctly in executive session. And I strongly suggest that we go into executive session and allow these learned gentlemen to tell us what they have found out, and hopefully they can help us with a path forward. I think that that's only fair. I want to know.
I think also that it's important that we clarify that the discussion about these resolutions and what the plan is to move forward is going to happen openly afterwards. And that's where we can discuss funding options and how to pay for whatever the suggestions are that the board is going to decide that they want to do in order to move this forward. That's gonna be the open discussion afterwards. In order to have that discussion, you have to know where we are right now when it comes to our legal stance and the information from them. Then you can use that in your discussion afterwards to discuss and make decisions and have all the information.
Mr. Catalano, we can, anything that you share with us in executive session, we can come back to the public and share with the public?
No.
No, it's not, not as one single individual. It is the town's attorney-client privilege, but one individual can't waive that privilege for the town, right? Acting alone. But collectively, it is your privilege to waive if that was the collective decision of the town.
So just to be clear, because it is my goal as an Alderman to be as transparent as possible and to have open dialogue and to not do anything behind closed doors unless it is legally the most responsible thing to do. I want to make sure that people don't think we're making backdoor deals or trying to recreate another lawsuit situation. I really, I am not opposed to hearing what you have to say, but I want to make sure that it does not keep us from being able to have transparent discussions about the solutions and a means to an end to solve this situation in public.
There's no voting, there's no notes taken, there's no, none of that happens. Can't happen in executive session.
Your understanding is correct, and frankly, we're not in a position to advise you on where, when, and how you should vote for the town's good. That is your prerogative. We're simply providing you an update on where it stands.
But I want our residents to know, and also the developer, and also any future or past judge who might be looking at this case, that it is our job and our intent to keep everything in the light of day in terms of how to get to an expedient solution that is safe for the town, allows the development to move forward, and also is the most cost-effective thing that we can manage in our budget.
Absolutely.
May I make one more comment? Just want one, I want to add this caveat. It's up to you all. You have a purpose for going into executive session, which was, is my understanding, to discuss strategy and update on a lawsuit that's been filed. If at any point any of you start going astray, it's up to each of you and the attorney to stop that conversation, just like it should have been stopped here, to go, because it's not on the agenda. So that should be assurance to the public that you are gonna be transparent where you can be. You're only gonna discuss the legal ramifications.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Yes, Mr. Dino.
I'd like to go back to what Sandra said. This is a common tool, executive session, that is used for the legislative body. I mean, this is a way that the legislative body, in the context of the public meetings law, can get information. You all are gonna make decisions regarding this case, at least in appropriations of funds. So it would be really helpful, I think, that you would know where the attorneys were coming from, what the discussions have been, et cetera, et cetera, and that this is a commonly-used method, executive session, for the council or, let's say, branch of local government to learn matters that they need to know that we shouldn't, you know, I don't know, maybe we could have the plaintiffs invite us all into their strategy sessions at some point. I don't think, I don't think that's gonna happen. And I think that this is the way that it's done, and a public body handles things.
No, I'm afraid that I would hear something in that executive session that would, I would give it away inadvertently. Let me tell you, I've already been sent to the Attorney General one time on a bogus charge for something I said or didn't say, which the Attorney General said I didn't say, and I don't want to hear anything other than what's said in public. That's all I want to hear. If the attorneys want to do a strategy, they can do that. But this administration sent me to the Attorney General. It was Alderman Templay, and I'm not taking a chance to do that again. Thank you very much.
Okay, hearing no more comments, I'll entertain a motion. Do you go into executive session?
So moved.
Have a first...
Second.
And a second. Do we roll call vote, or?
Sure.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Budra?
Nay.
Alderman Patterson?
Yes.
Alderman Kontois?
Yay.
Alderman Saucy?
Nay.
Alderman Tomple?
Yay.
It fails.
It fails.
It failed. It failed. Four out of five. We need four out of five.
It's a two-thirds vote.
So E.J. and Steve voted against.
I'm not the one who's against.
No, we needed people that were willing to talk with these people, but they're not.
Okay. All right. Okay, we're gonna move forward. New business number two, Resolution 2025-07-01. This is exploring options for funding for the Meadows, consideration of an adoption, a resolution affirming shared responsibility and intergovernmental coordination. Any questions?
Do you want to read these amendments or discuss them?
I'm gonna read, you want me to read the whole thing? Yeah, we can discuss.
Yeah, it's pretty involved. I was like...
Sure. 280701.
I'll read one, you read two.
Okay.
All righty.
I didn't know, did you want to read it, or did you want us to just explain? I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were directing the question my way.
I'll tell you what. It would probably be easier for you just to explain it. That would make it real quick.
Absolutely. So it's long, there's a lot of whereas's at the start of the resolution.
Mr. Capitel, who was this authored by? A board member or the mayor?
You mean on the Board of Aldermen? It was authored, it was authored through employees of the town preparing the resolution at the direction of the mayor.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So Resolution 2025-07-01, there are two resolutions that are, that at least look similar at first glance. This resolution, moving past the whereas's and into really Section 5 of the resolution where it is, authorizes, the board acknowledges that the town engineer at the direction of the administration has presented two viable infrastructure options. So these, again, addressing comments from earlier. Once, you know, after it was identified that there was an issue at the connection point, the town engineer noted that the capacity was already over, was already passed where it should be, cannot continue to exceed. The town engineer also proposed alternative connections, right? These are two of those alternative connections that the town engineer indicates are still viable, right? They're outlined. He's presented those two viable infrastructure options, which I'm not qualified to outline. Maybe Mr. Wilson is, but certainly John Catalonato is. Right, I think we have, I think they were previously circulated and discussed at a meeting, and if you want to try to post them while I'm talking, certainly feel free. Those options, it recognizes this resolution that the options and the funding of those options can't be met within the current municipal budget of the town of Abida Springs. So the board, under this resolution, would authorize the town to seek voter approval for alternative funding mechanisms, notably either a dedicated millage or a sales tax increase to fund the necessary improvements. And then, you know, within the allowance. So in other words, there's not a dollar amount that's approved, it's kind of the initiation of the process. I know that there's procedural steps that need to be followed before a sales tax or a millage. The amount that was needed, the shortfall between the alternatives and which alternative was picked would need to be identified. So there are steps from here, but this is the authorization to move forward with exploring funding those alternative proposals. You can see here, improvement number one is up there. These figures are not current to date, they weren't developed now, so they may need to be updated, but the capital cost on improvement number one was $2 million, in excess of $2 million. And the schedule to completion is 10 to 15 months. There's also, I don't know if you can go to the second option here, the capital cost here was $1.5 million with another schedule of 10 to 15 months to completion for this alternative. So this resolution is an attempt to move forward in, with recommendations by, I will note, the only engineer that has given an opinion on the issue to date. So while Lonesome has, or Lonesome may challenge those conclusions, we've provided with no other engineer opinion contradicting those conclusions.
Do they have an offer of any solutions out of good faith, or in abundance of caution or grace?
I'll note that these alternatives were developed...
Trucks.
Yes. These alternatives were developed about two years ago. When they were developed, they were shared with Lonesome in the attempt to reach a negotiation. Lonesome has refused to even negotiate the alternatives. Lonesome's counsel stated that his solution would be for the sewage to be trucked from that connection point by trucks to the sewage facility until the improvements were reached. That was counsel's suggestion.
Okay, it's a...
Hey, but hey...
I'm sorry, it's not public comment, yes.
Hold on, just a second. Just a minute. No, I'm sorry.
And there will be a time for public comment, absolutely. I just don't think it's there.
Okay.
I had to clarify.
Okay.
So this resolution, again, does not have a dollar amount tied to it. It's the initiation of the process to explore these alternatives that the town engineer has opined could be developed while maintaining the safety of the town citizens. developed while maintaining the safety of the town citizens, and also attempting, if Lonesome will concede, to meet the, uh, connections required for the subdivision.
So, that's the...
Right, that's resolution number one. I, I didn't know if you'd want to take them one at a time, or if you want me to go through...
Should we take them one at a time and vote?
No, let's, let's hear both of them, and what's different, because it's slightly different.
It is.
Could you just highlight the differences? I think it's, uh, like, three, four, and five, somewhere in that, that area.
Correct. So, and this is Resolution 2025 dash oh seven dash oh two, which is also on the agenda for your consideration. This second resolution does not talk about funding alternatives. Instead, what it notes is that the Board acknowledges, this is in Point Four, the conclusion reached by the town engineer, but resolves that it will review and give serious consideration to the opinion of another qualified licensed professional engineer, whether provided by Lonesome Development LLC or otherwise. In other words, if Lonesome LLC contends that the town engineer's conclusions are wrong, flawed, incorrect, inaccurate, Lonesome is, as it has always been, but this is a recognition that Lonesome is free to come forward with an engineering opinion supporting its position, which the Board of Alderman and the town would give serious consideration to, even though it has an opinion already been provided to the contrary.
And how does that change if we don't pass either resolution? What does that, what does that change? The town still could explore those options without us passing either resolution, correct?
The resolution is an affirmation by the town, by the Board of Alderman, that it is moving forward with this process in a positive way, as well as identifying the solutions that could be. I will note that Option One, and well as probably Option Two, would require appropriations, which is the Board of Alderman's obligation to do, um, and, and not the mayor's, right? And, again, these are, these are directives that have been placed on the town, and this is a collective effort by both the mayor and, as presented to the Board of Alderman, to make a decision for the town that also involves appropriations for the town.
Mr. Catalano, just for your information, I had submitted at least $600,000 to be in the 2025 budget for sewer improvements, and that was declined by this administration. So, it, it's not that this board is not interested...
Wait, what, what, you did what now?
Okay. Um, it, it's, I'm sorry.
They're close. They're Italian names with a C. It's okay.
My apology. I, I remember Andrew Wilson. Um, as, as I said earlier, um, I'm willing to meet with this developer at any time, with this administration, with you guys, uh, with their attorneys, to move this forward. And as you mentioned, any financial appropriations will have to be approved by the Board, and we are ready to consider all options. I'm doing everything I can financially, or seeking infor, information to, um, obtain resources, financial resources, to move this forward. So, it's not that we're not interested in, um, not meeting with them and working to get this development moving. It's been six years.
Well, then you'll have an opportunity.
I've been pursuing that too, talking to my representative about it, so I don't even know what the resolutions are for. There's a lot of other things in there besides that, that I don't really agree with.
Have those communications been communicated to the mayor so that he knew that you were working on those options?
No.
Which one?
Any of them.
Any of them.
Uh, I've started working on it today, after I spoke with Alderman Patterson, and at the budget meeting, if you remember my spreadsheet that I put on the screen, on that big screen using Leanne's computer, it said $500,000 or $600,000 for sewer for 2025.
But six, uh, let's just say that that's factual. $600,000 doesn't get us $2 million. It doesn't even get it started. So, the question, I think, of these, um, resolutions is that as a group, the mayor and the Board of Alderman are going to work together to find a path forward for this.
To make a commitment and allocate funding.
And to figure out how this development moves forward. And that requires you guys to be active participants with the mayor.
Also shows why we should have gone into executive section. You would have, you would have gotten the information. Steve, you shake your head all day long, but knowledge is power, and we should have sat down with them, and, and you've already picked your path anyway, so it's, it's a mute point. You too, EJ.
We should have been working on this for six years. What were you doing on the previous?
We should have been doing this for six years, but you know what?
Why weren't you?
You go back, you go back to the administration that, that got us into this whole thing.
Why weren't you?
We were. We have been.
We have been. Why do you think we're pumping to another place? Why, why are we doing that? Why are we putting in a new sewage plant?
Why do we line the lines on all the laterals?
That came from a different engineering firm.
What came from a different engineering firm?
No, it did not.
No, it didn't.
It did not. That's not accurate.
It did not.
That wasn't Item D and E of the, uh, principal engineering...
No, it was not. No.
I would note, just briefly on the resolutions as well. So, Option One, again, is to explore the opportunity to develop funds for the alternatives proposed by the town engineer, if you believe those aren't viable for, for whatever reason. Option Two allows you to move forward without regard to the town engineer's opinion, as long as you have another town, another engineer that's willing to opine to the contrary, right? And you can certainly vote down either option while still exploring other options. Again, it's, it's not our prerogative to tell you all how you should vote. These are the options that have been presented to date by the only licensed certified engineer that has provided options.
Well, I have a lot of concerns about both all the whereas clauses in here, that I can't verify as being factual. I know it's someone's version of the facts, but I can't, as an Alderman, say whereas those things are all correct, because they're not stating law. They're stating an opinion of things that may or may not have happened. So, that is my first, um, problem with it. The fact that the lawsuit has already been filed and adjudicated multiple times, and we can't change the contract agreement, and we heard from the developer themselves, or from their representative, that they have no interest in the variety of different options. So, I don't really see, um, why moving forward with potentially a tax, which we have never discussed, and further use of the engineer to spend more money on engineering for a solution that they might not even entertain, is beneficial for this council. Now, I can speak for myself and say, I am willing and able and ready to participate in any way to find a viable solution, but I don't believe that the resolution is necessary. And I have a lot of problem with the language in this, which was given to us last Friday after 5:00 PM. And there hasn't been enough time to digest why, where this is coming from, and what the implications are to this board, who, by the way, no one up here, except for the mayor, was a councilman at the time that the res, the original, um, agreement was signed. So, if the agreement isn't changing, I don't see why this board should be putting themselves in the mix.
So, it sounds, it sounds to me like you're in support of moving forward with the development agreement. What I would note is that Option Two is exactly to that end. There is a town ordinance that requires this engineer opinion, so Option Two is giving you that freedom that you've requested to move forward with the development agreement as written.
I, I would submit that...
But do we need a resolution to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
I would submit that I remember a, a town hall meeting where the engineer gave his opinion on the sewer, and I do know, I, for a fact, that Lonesome Development was present in the audience when he did that. So, I would say, in fact, that Lonesome Development is already aware of the engineer's suggestions.
Oh, they're fully aware. We, when the, when the suggestions were given, we went to Lonesome to see if they would agree to negotiate to move forward with those alternatives. Their response was, we're not willing to consider any alternative. You'll need to bring trucks out there and truck sewerage from where we're going to connect.
It's important that we pass one of these resolutions for several reasons. First off, we received a demand letter from Lonesome Development.
Can you share with us, what that demand letter was?
Pardon me?
Can you share with us what the demand letter stated?
Yeah, give me a second.
Uh, it's, did they, did they send this, did they send that the email? How'd they send that?
They sent it by email, and they sent it by FedEx.
Oh, it's open, well, we definitely don't want to get involved in if it's open litigation.
That's why, A, we needed to go in executive session, but you two decided you didn't want to do that. And secondly, we've got to show that we, we're trying to move forward in good faith, and that's why there's a resolution on the, on the, on the table right now. If y'all decide that y'all don't want to tell them that we're trying to work on it, you don't want to tell the 22nd Judicial Court we're trying, and you don't want to tell the, the DEQ that we're trying to do this, then it's on y'all. It's on you. Okay? Pretty much all I got to say.
Well, then, what we need to do is pick one of the resolutions that you think you're interested in. Tell me what we need to get. What, what more information do we need to get? Because we need to have one. We need to have one voted on and accepted, and I will put it on next meeting's agenda. And if it doesn't go there, I'll put it on the next meeting.
Well, if you, if you don't mind. Just call a special meeting just to discuss it.
Mayor, and after I was getting ready to say, thank you, Alderman Patterson, if you could call a special meeting, that'd be great, and if you could get the developers in that meeting, so we can all sit down together and do it in a public meeting, however you want to do it, special meeting, get everyone together to sit down and discuss it. Um, so the public knows what's going on.
Their legal representative, correct me if I'm wrong, just got up here and said tonight, they have no interest in negotiating.
None. Zero.
Move forward. Now, remember...
He also said that someone would be here if they had known.
Right. They, they weren't involved. Remember, there was, it's Catalano. Um, John Catalano did mention there was the Pearl Street lift station, if I remember, to the main plant. Those two six inches would have to go to a 12. Um, the two six inches could be sufficient for now, and that was about $800,000, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
$800,000. Maybe, maybe we could sit down and negotiate with them, and there's $800,000 that we may get toward this 2.1 million. So, there, there are options, and, uh, to discuss before we start going into with resolutions. And Mr. Alderman-Budrow, your comment about principal engineering, that was due to the wastewater treatment plant from principal engineering in April of 2020.
That's right.
So, I think, rather than just saying by resolution, we intend to work together, another alternative would be to either call a special meeting amongst ourselves to discuss options and show that we are progressing forward, discussing it openly, and what those options are. What I don't like is that this, um, resolution is already sort of cutting to potentially looking for a tax increase, which there may be six different ways that we could go about, um, finding the funds. So, I'm not going to say yes to a resolution that specifically raises taxes for our residents if that's not really the best solution. There's a lot of things in this that I have not had time to digest. It came out of left field. We haven't been told anything about it. We got it on five o'clock on a Friday before the Tuesday meeting, and we didn't know the special session was going to come until Monday.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll, we'll defer it until the next meeting. It'll be on the next meeting. How's that? That'll give you two more weeks.
As the exact same information, or as a special meeting to discuss? Or, I mean, you know, we talked about our whole process for coming up with legislation. We were going to go back to the way Abida used to do it, where we came and we talked about something, we came up with the verbiage for it, and then we took that thing that everybody had had input in, and then we wrote a resolution, or then we wrote legislation. We've talked for hours and hours about how we were going to go back to that, and this came out of left field.
Okay, so then let's take it, and y'all send us your, your, what you think needs to be written in the, in the resolution, and I'll put it up on, on the next meeting. How's that?
I do want to point out that this is not something that we can discuss endlessly. This developer wants to move forward. They are working with planning and zoning to get on the agenda. They will be going to get their final approvals. It's going to come to you, and you're going to have to make a decision. And my hope would be that you would have decided what the solution is before you have to make that decision on approving their final plat. And so, this is not an endless time. They have not gotten final approval of their final plat for their plug.
We don't approve their plat.
You do. The planet, the town council is who, it's an ordinance. You guys approved, they've never gotten their final approval on their final plat. The subdivision is going through planning and zoning. Final plat is coming to you. They are going through the process right now. Kristin is working with them. They are submitting their documents. They are doing what needs to be done so that this can come for a public discussion and approvals. And we have to figure out what our plan is to accommodate this and fix this problem. And that's why it's a time constraint. That's why it's being put on here. And we don't want to just signal that we're trying to work with the developer. We want to work to move this forward. And so, it's not just making a statement that this is a resolution to say so that the judge doesn't put the mayor in jail. This is our attempt to try to actively get the Board of Alderman to participate in making a decision about how to fix this problem, because the mayor can't make the decision alone.
Please bring the developers in for the meeting.
The developers will not be involved in what that decision is. It's your decision, and it's the town is going to be the one that has to appropriate funds or allow them to connect via decision number two.
There are things that the development agreement is silent about, in terms of how many, um, homes go with each phase, and if there is a way that we can abide by the regulation of the courts, provide a connection, and phase it in a way that does, is not detrimental to our residents, and gives us time to acquire money, for instance, uh, through their fees, their impact fees for each of the homes as they come online, and also seeking other methods for funding. There's, there's different ways that we can, you know, that it would be helpful to at least allow them to be within range of the discussion of whatever our solution is, as opposed to saying, we're going to do it without the developer.
No, my, I...
Have, have they, have they been, have they shown any interest to, to discuss or negotiate anything with us?
They, they have not. Um, what I will note is that we, your phased approach actually was discussed with the town engineer, who, who isn't here, and I am by no means an engineer. My understanding was that, no, that approach would not work, as it is already over capacity, at over capacity at this point.
Right. The line that it goes through runs right behind Ms. Wiggins' house, where the sewer just comes bubbling up.
Is there current, Ms. Wiggins, is there sewer coming out of your yard presently?
Yeah.
Yes, or no? Okay.
Nothing compared to what? What it used to be?
Before the pipes were redone, correct?
Well, and the increase of the lift station capacities as well, that we did. So...
Well, I, for one, need more time to consider the ramifications of this, and to understand where it's coming from and why it is required by resolution. So, I can't be in favor of it tonight.
I'm 100% correct that the, the idea was for you to have opportunities to be able to have discussions before these more things were presented in a resolution form like this. And, um, there is also provision for extenuating circumstances. And there is an immediate threat, again, in this demand letter that was sent to the mayor that says that the charges for contempt would be refiled, and that he could be put in jail. So, there is a sense of urgency. We have to be expedient in our actions, because I don't think anybody here is interested in seeing the mayor go to jail over this, because he's trying to protect the public health.
I agree with what you're saying. I wish that we had been included sooner than Friday after five.
Mr. Dino, um, is, as far as the resolution, uh, it would just be a motion to introduce, is that correct?
From listening, I think an appropriate, uh, motion might be to defer till the next meeting, whether it be special or regular meeting, that would give everybody the time to contribute to it and to, and to discuss it. I think that, um, and, and, and I, I agree with, with Councilman Kontos is saying, conceptually, that was the change that we had made for the, um, the meeting setup, so that this could be, um, hashed out informally, and that the resolution could be actually drafted, you know, and said, what do you think of that? What do you think of that? And, and do it that way. Uh, now, I do think that it's important that, that, and I don't think anybody's saying anything contrary to this, but that it's important that the message remain that this town as a body wants to work on this in a constructive way, and, and wants to work together. wants to work on this in a constructive way and wants to work together.
Correct.
And I think that that's basically the message here, that there's been laid out two resolutions that give out all kinds of different methods to go about doing things. Doesn't, doesn't really preclude anything. And, but it gives the message that we all understand what the ground rules are. We understand what our functions are. We understand what the mayor's function is. We understand what the legal situation is. And we're all working together on it. I think it's important that this town legally send that message out. And I would just suggest that if, if this matter's not going to be voted on tonight, that there should be, it should be voted on to defer it so that the process continues. It's not a rejection of the concept that we want to work together. I think it's very important that we don't reject that idea. So that's, that's where I think we should do. That's what I'd recommend to you to do. I haven't heard anybody say, I don't want to work together. I haven't heard anybody say anything contrary to what the purpose of these resolutions are. I hear people have been misgivings about, like what you said, factual representations that have been put into the, which absolutely have no legal effect. They can be taken out and things that anybody's not comfortable with. And there might be other ideas that might come from the council that could be added to the resolution. So I would, I would suggest that you, if you're not comfortable on adopting it tonight, to defer it to a definitive time.
Well, and take out some of this language.
Well, whatever y'all decide to do.
It has to be refined. But Mr. Dino, as you said, there's no, this development's coming to fruition. Dan Curtis voted for this as an alderman. He inherited this. It's not his fault that whatever Mayor Lemmons did before, he inherited this. And it comes with becoming mayor. And his successor is going to inherit whatever he leaves behind. So we want to move this forward. We know this development's coming to fruition. It's been adjudicated through the courts. I want to think 39 judges have now looked at this total in all the trial judge appellate courts and the Supreme Judges, Supreme Court Judges. I just think the best thing to do is for all of us to sit around a round table, bring the developers in and have a conversation.
Can't do it.
And it, well.
Can't do it.
Heard her. It can't happen.
Well, it's in litigation right now. While it's in litigation.
Can't do it.
It's like when you're looking for a police report and say, well, it's under investigation. We'll have to release the details later. Same thing. This thing right here that he's telling you is, he can't legally tell everybody what's going on or he can be disbarred and then feature other sanctions. Y'all not hearing that. If you don't know the information out of the horse's mouth, you can't give it to us. He can't give it to us under law. That's what we were trying to tell you.
I'm very familiar with that part of it.
Okay, so then that stuff initially didn't be discussed. The thing that I wanted to ask him earlier about that, sir? I apologize.
Andrew. Just so we're all clear, would have to be an open meeting.
Absolutely.
If you all are present.
Absolutely.
That would, I just, and I figured that's what you were suggesting, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, the public needs to hear what these developers are saying because if everything's one-sided from the town's attorneys, that isn't fair. Let's break, let's get them to come in and speak. Well, he's not here. He's here on behalf of the law firm that is representing, but he, he knows nothing about this. He knows nothing about this case. Yes.
That's issued from the public.
Right.
That statement said, they're not doing anything. They're done. So you're not talking to them. They're done. They're going to hook it up to the St. James Waterman, like he said, or Sulman, whatever he called it.
Let's call, let's call the public meeting and see what we get.
Are you representing the town? Are you representing the government?
That man sitting right there is telling you to go into executive session. So he can tell you secrets that he can't tell us so that y'all as a group can disseminate, whether y'all get along or not, whether y'all agree or not. All of you hear it. All of you get to say it. Y'all don't get disbarred. Y'all don't get sanctioned. He does. So what in the world are y'all thinking? And I'm not against any of y'all, but I don't understand. So please clear up my confusion. I understand how you can be righteous and not want to go into some secret stuff. I actually appreciate that. I'm not bragging at anybody. The microphone mic, I think, I forgot. I'm not against any one of y'all because I don't have a dog in the hunt. I'm fresh set of ears, fresh set of eyes. I'm here so I can see for myself, eliminate my own ignorance. So before I go talking tomorrow or next week, I'm not speaking out of school. This is not what somebody told me. It's what I know because I was here. So to not speak, that's y'all's bad. For them wanting to plug up a bigger pipe into a smaller pipe that's however many years old, they know it's going to fail, that's negligence on their part. If they do it, then so be it. Let the chips fall where they may. Let the dice roll. But y'all, we should have your back, not their back. Not anybody, no offense to y'all, thank you for helping us, but we shouldn't have their back either. We got your back. Y'all sit together and do something in consensus and then stand on it. Be willing to take a loss if you love this place and if you want it really to be good. For somebody other than yourself. And I'm not running for mayor next time and taking all the passes. Because I'm tired of people texting me and asking me, no, I'm not. Look, I love you because you're a representative for me again. And I've been gone for almost 30 years. It's my home. And I'm telling you, I'm not mad, I'm passionate. Because I'm not going to sit around and look at this and listen to this anymore because I'm not a child. And I'm not on the plantation. I'm free. I'm retired. I can do whatever I want. I'm giving my everything back to this town. It doesn't have to be as elected official. So I'm going to tell you, I'll be your best friend and I'll be your best friend to hold you accountable. But you ain't going to peek down my back and tell me it's random. No, no. You go back and tell your people that too. Because I wasn't speaking before. I'm speaking from here on forward.
Sir, I appreciate you, but you're not at the microphone and that's a lot of time. So, you know, you got to speak when, when it's allowable.
We, we have a fiduciary responsibility to represent the people of this town. I take that very, very personally. The mayor takes it personally. I know Eric takes it personally. I'm having some question with some other people, but maybe they'll step forward and go into an executive session to find out the information. Quit being a chicken.
I've only been on the board two years. You've been on this thing 16 years.
16 years.
Why haven't you done something so far? We had six years.
Can I tell you what? It takes money to do things and we've got no money.
Well, we just now started looking for it. We're going to get it.
Well, you know what?
All right, so let's, no, we're going to wait. We'll have an open section. You can talk then. So what do we need to do? We need a motion to defer?
A move to defer.
Right.
I make a motion to defer since nobody's going to be doing anything. So I moved to defer.
Can we table it?
I defer to.
When can we have another meeting?
Can we motion it to, motion to table it or defer?
What?
I'm asking for a date.
I don't know what the next, what's the next meeting date?
The first meeting in August. With another chance to go in, with another chance hopefully of going into executive session.
I'm sorry, why can't we table it?
Because.
Because you'll kill it.
What's that?
You'll kill it. I'm moving to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. I would ask for a roll call vote, please. Public comment and then I'm asking for a roll call vote.
You know, I got to stick to the latest thing. But, but I would urge you to defer it because I see problems with each of the individual ones that were put forward so far. The problem I see with the first one is that it's contemplating a really high tax. I mean, if you work it out, that's a couple thousand dollars per household. And we shouldn't be, I'm one of the few people around here who's in favor of taxes, but only when they're being used for something constructive. And in this case, it's just to help out these developers. And I don't want to see that. I don't want to see it even contemplated. And my problem with the second one is slightly different. I, I like the idea of getting a second opinion from an engineer, but Lonesome has never, I sat through all the planning stuff back six, seven years ago, whatever. They have never had the best interest of the town at heart in any way, shape or form. They've always tried to evade the law or, or get laws changed to allow them to go ahead. So in the second one, you mentioned using their engineer. And I, I don't think that we should be trusting in any way, shape or form anything said by the developer or any of their employees. And you can negotiate with them if they want to negotiate, but let's not put in any resolution of ours that we're going to be listening to one of their engineers. Thank you.
All right, we're ready for a vote?
There's, there's a motion to.
We have.
Yes. About anything else. It's about deferring.
So my motion, my motion is on the floor. I have booed to defer.
Any additional comments about deferring?
Deferring only.
Jog on up here, please. Jog on up.
Or you could fly on up. Just fly on up here.
So since I was a part of this mess to begin with and with Patrick Barrigan, 72126 Hickory Street, as an alderman with Danny when we voted, realized that we were told multiple times by Principal Engineering that we had the capacity for this. That wasn't just a Greg thing. And we can go back and go look at this. That's pretty important. The, the next thing is if we want to negotiate with them, right now is not the time. We've lost how many cases? I mean, I mean, we're talking about negotiating. Negotiating, that should have been done seven years ago, not right now. So I don't think having him or all or whoever the attorney was that brought it before us, having them, there's nothing to negotiate. Something needs to be fixed and needs to be fixed. Also, what did we spend the money on rehabbing the sewer for? That I voted for, Dan voted for. I thought we did that to accept this. So I think more of the question needs to, Andre, what's going on? Why don't we have the capacity? Why don't we, why are our lines ready for this? Because I thought we spent over $2 million, as I recall, relining these.
Some of them.
Six million.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember the numbers. So I think that's more of the question here. And I, you know, the, I don't want to be seen as pointing fingers because this is a mess that Dan and I share, right? Leslie and Gina and Ryan. So anyways, but going forward, what's going on? Why, why can't the sewer system accept this?
Mr. Barrigan, one question for you. Principal Engineering's April 2020 report was on the wastewater management system, our plant.
Right.
That wasn't on the lines. Was there a separate engineering report?
The only one I remember is that every time this came up.
Wait, to get, to get the $6 million when, under Greg Lemmons, when he started redoing the lines? Is that a separate engineering report?
I can't recall that. I thought they handled both, both what capacity we had and also the sewer project. You got that, that's on Jay Moon and that. So. Anyways, that's the crux of the, what we're talking about here. Why don't we have a capacity, right? Because that's the impasse. So, and no reason to have them, where they're representatives, at a meeting. I know what I want to pay for a Gordon Arad attorney to be somewhere. I know the town doesn't want to either, right? It's all up to y'alls to fix it.
No, addressing your point on the Principal Engineering and Councilman Salsi makes a good point. No report from Principal Engineering ever said there was capacity for Lonesome. I don't know where that's coming from.
I think during, well, during direct, every time this came up, I was an alderman at the time. Anytime this came up, we asked.
Right. But it wasn't, it was about, just as Councilman Salsi explained it, it was about the wastewater treatment plant. It was not about Lonesome and the capacity for Lonesome.
Anytime this development came up, I know it was a question.
There are apples and oranges.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
And then in addition, the only reason why there was a thought that there was a capacity is that because the developer gave Mayor Lemmons a letter and said, issue this letter and say you have the capacity. And that's the sole basis for Lonesome Development's contention that the town has capacity. If you look to the documents and you look to all the engineering reports, you, it begs the question, why won't Lonesome come forward with a written report that says they have the capacity? If this system goes online, the town is ultimately liable because the permits were issued by DEQ to the town. The town, all of you people will pay for all the sewage treatment and all the damages that are happening onto yourselves. It doesn't make any sense. So if there was any possibility that this particular project could have the capacity and could come online with the town, then Lonesome should have come up with a report three years ago. Instead of doing that, they filed threatening lawsuits against the town's engineers saying his, his figures are all wrong, but they won't come up with anything, any engineering report that says why they're wrong. The only thing they have is the developer's affidavit and he's not an engineer. So it's just a hatchet job lawsuit and that's what's going on right now.
I, I, I can speak to none, I can't speak to that lawsuit, but I'm just saying what happened when I was here. That's all I'm speaking to.
But there is no report that says the town had the capacity and that needs, that's a postulat.
And I didn't say there was a report. I said that when we asked, there were direct questions.
Right.
We asked.
Mr. Wilson, clarify this for me because I've got possession of the April 20 report, 2020, from Principal, and that only pertains to the sewer plant.
Right.
Is that, was, when you say capacity, are you referring to capacity for the plant or capacity for the lines?
The entire system to take on Lonesome Development's sewage flow.
Right now, capacity at the plant is not an issue because we're bypassing our plant going to Arrowood.
So that's. That's, that's the proposal.
No, 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 no. The town of Abita Springs today.
Yeah.
Is bypassing our plant and going to Arrowood. So capacity in the plant is not an issue. I'm concerned with the lines and this 2.1 million dollar figure that John has in his report or the 1.5 million, depending on which way we go, will that correct the problem? Because.
He says that it will.
Okay.
And the important point is that the developer was responsible for the connection that would be substituted for the solution that John offers. The developer's supposed to pay for that. And that's what the development agreement says.
For the contract, the developmental agreement, they're.
In the development agreement.
They're responsible from, hold on.
Yeah.
They make the connection to St. James and then they're responsible from Pearl, the Pearl.
Pearl Street Lift Station.
Lift station to the plant. But that's poss, there's a possibility with 1.5 million being one of the alternatives, can we get by, and I'm not an engineer or a lawyer, can we get by with getting the $800,000 from them, not having to connect from Pearl Street to the lift station with a 12-inch force main and go with the 1.5 million and then we only have to come up with 700,000?
You're exactly right. And that is what we proposed and we were met with, they were not willing to alter from the terms of the development agreement. That was the proposal. You're already going to spend $800,000. This is going to cost 1.5 million. Why don't we take that 800,000 from the developer? And we, we had negotiations, one-sided, I say negotiations. We had discussions where we attempted to have that discussion with Lonesome and we were met with outright refusal, much like the statement that was given today.
In this developmental agreement, it doesn't say when that connection needs to be made from Pearl Street to the main station. Y'all aware of that, correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
I have a, I have a question for you.
Excuse me, Mr. Boudreaux. So can we demand that now?
Say again, I'm sorry.
Needs to be done before the project starts or before a connection is made?
I'm sorry.
Can we demand that the connection from Pearl Street to the main lift station is a 12-inch force main installed before connection to St. James?
No, because the developer got the judge to rule that the development agreement has to be enforced exactly as written. And you can't substitute any of the provisions of the contract unless both parties agree.
But where, where does it say in the development agreement when they are to connect the Pearl Street lift station to our plant with a 12-inch force main? I, I understand that. Where does it say that?
My question is.
There's no specific timeline other than there are mentions of expediency in the course of the agreement and that, it certainly implies that there shouldn't, nothing should be delayed unnecessarily. But there's no set timeline, if that's your question.
Well, that's, that's where I'm going with it.
I'd like to call us to get back to the deferment.
That's where I'm going with it.
That's what we're on, the deferment.
May I make a public comment, please?
If we can get them, if we can get them to, to the table, that may be a way.
I want us to go back to what we have right now on the agenda, which is a deferment.
Right. The motion was to defer.
Right.
You should address that. The motion to defer was so that you could have an open meeting, the public's fully aware aware, so you could be transparent, if I'm not mistaken, about this issue. So, please just accept comments on the motion to defer. I support the motion to defer.
Right. The motion to defer is on the table. Do I have a second?
Any more comments?
Second.
Hearing none, we have another second.
Do we have enough?
Alderman Patterson, you voted to defer. I'm waiting.
Right.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Budra.
If, if y'all can take out all the legalese and all the other things that pertain to it and come back to the one original subject matter of these resolutions, I'll go for the defer. Yes.
Alderman Patterson.
Yes.
Alderman Tomblay.
Yay.
Alderman Saucy.
Yay.
Alderman Tomblay.
Yay.
It is deferred.
Next.
Next meeting.
And are we voting on them together or was that the first of the two?
Which, that was.
So, should we do the same for the second?
I move to defer the second resolution to the next meeting.
Does the mayor have to read it first?
No.
No, it's already been read.
2025-07-002. And, you know, first, Alderman Patterson, to the next meeting, if you have a question.
Nobody's made a second.
I'll second that.
We even seconded it. Do we have to have public comment on number two as well? Public comment on number two?
Public comment on number two. Go ahead there, Byron.
It's only to defer.
Just about deferring, please.
Yes, but I would suggest that y'all consider when y'all defer to maybe to consolidate it into one resolution. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Seeing no others. Roll call vote?
Alderman Budra.
Aye.
Alderman Patterson.
Yes.
Alderman Tomblay.
Aye.
Alderman Saucy.
Aye.
Alderman Tomblay.
Yes.
Can I ask for clarification real quick about what the process is now for the board to contribute into what they would like to see these resolutions to say before the next meeting or what this process is going to look like for you to actively participate in creating the resolutions that you're interested in, in passing?
I mean, the language that Mr. Dino used earlier, I mean, all these legal whereas's we can almost do away with, "We're going to move forward. We're going to work together to try to get the funding."
I think she's talking about, are you going to send an email with markups?
Right, so is it legal and, and okay for them to submit, not copy each other, but submit to the administration what they would like to see so that something is presented that's representative of what they would like to see and it's not the town administration trying to gas what you want? If, is that legal for them to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And is there a timeline in order for you to be able to digest those modifications and come up with something if you want it presented at the next meeting?
Week from today?
Yeah, we need a week.
Yeah.
Week from today, okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Dino?
I'm, no. Yeah, press the button.
So, we got both deferred. Anything else?
So.
We need to defer.
Yeah, we defer those resolutions, so technically they want to change the content. You don't, do you amend a resolution or do you just, can you just start with fresh with a new resolution?
Well, we could do it either way.
I think that depends on their feedback. If it's just some, some changes to this one, then you probably could amend it and if not, and then if not.
You could re-introduce, you could reintroduce how new.
And then table these or, or set these aside or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to move on to old business now, which is something we've already discussed. 2025-07-003, consideration of the adoption of a resolution. It's the increase in garbage fee. Here, look.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
So, we don't, y'all don't need to read it?
No.
Okay.
The garbage?
It's the garbage thing that we talked about the last time.
Very clearly spelled out.
Okay, good. We don't need to read it. So, we have a first and a second?
Second.
Eric, I was first, Eric second.
Well, yeah. Everybody got it? Public comment about the garbage? Stuart, you sure? All right.
Yeah, in summation, if anybody missed the last meeting, it's going to be something of the nature of 70 cents, 80 cents.
Increasing garbage.
Increasing garbage, which the garbage contractor is charging us and we're just passing on directly with no upcharge to the residents for the services provided.
From 2670 to 2748.
What's the difference? Yeah. 2670.
I have to pull out my calculator.
48. 70 something cents or something like that.
Yeah, I thought it was, like 74, 76 cents.
78 cents difference a month.
Okay, so we, we have a first and a second.
Yes.
Do we need to roll call vote this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, move. Okay, and motion to close the, the meeting? Wait a minute.
No, open it, adjourn it.
Open session.
Open session.
Oh, open session. Now, open session. Anybody got anything to say?
Please do. When it happens. I have my own questions. I have some questions. I think I'll, I think I'll. I'm just cleared from my.
Okay, first of all, I would hope that you come up with a deadline to have the, the